Good morning. It is July 19, 2022. We'll call the order leaving of the Story County. Board of Supervisors, please stand with me if you're able and if you're comfortable just.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would entertain the motion to adopt today's agenda.
So.
Second, we've been seconded, working.
Aye.
Headed side, face so high. Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make public comment, please step forward to the table and raise your hand on to. Being known as a close public comment number one and two agency reports, the Veterans Affairs Quarterly Report, I believe they have Brett on line.
This is submitted.
It's a submitted report.
Yeah, just making sure that they're.
Oh, okay, okay. This is going to make comments on up there.
Good morning, board.
Morning. Is there?
Pretty self-explanatory down on the report on how many veterans that we've seen and hometown outreach program, education, and then our outreach program that we did for with Home Base Iowa. I guess the biggest thing I wanted to point out is, and this is the first that we've seen this, but Story County, Vietnam Veterans of America Chapter 1102 has voted to disband their chapter. And it's just, it's just, they're all getting older and they're all in their eighties and nobody wants to take over. So the thing that they took care of though was the flags out at Dakens Lake. I asked if they could continue that for the, for the remainder of the year anyway, and then we're going to be looking for another organization to take over that project. So I just wanted to point that out to the board and, I mean, eventually in time, this is probably going to happen with the VFW being next and the American Legion is larger, so that may, you know, be around a lot longer. Hopefully it's been here over a hundred years, so that one may survive, you know, as, as veterans get older. But the younger veterans aren't joining these organizations and so. And I actually put down there at the bottom where it says Story County better, Vietnam Veterans of America, the dates that you had to serve to join it between 61 and 71, 75, so. There lies the problem.
All right. Well, thank you, Brett.
Any questions for me? All right, everybody have a great day.
You, thanks so much. Next we have Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Workforce and Outreach Quarterly Report. Good morning, Greg and Nikki.
Good morning, supervisors.
Time flew since April when we last did this.
That sent Greg an email. I'm like, so are you ready to do our presentation together? And he's like.
What?
What? I was like, it's time.
Uh, so, uh, updates to start. Since April, I've been out in the communities for outreach for a number of things and in front of you is a sheet that's replacing one of the, the slides in here that, that slipped through my fingers on the merging of our two presentations. So when we get to that one, I'll let you know, but everything else is in the packet and it is in online. So, um, since April of this year, our last time we were here, I've been focusing on several different community projects. We got Roland Gilbert, Zering, Colo, Collins, Cambridge and Slater. These communities, not that I haven't been in the other communities and keeping in contact, but these are the ones that have been using my time and asking for a lot of help and resources for different reasons. So in Roland, Community Planning, Iowa State Project on the Comprehensive Plan has just been released. There are a lot of community discussions happening in Roland right now. There's a lot of different discussions on what works, what doesn't move forward on it. Iowa State has released the Comprehensive Plan and right now in Roland, there's talk of how to execute it and what they can do and cannot do. As you three know, especially right now, there's a lot of funding out there, but there's a lot of strings attached to that funding. So as a community, someone hears that, hey, there's this brand new funding source from the federal government. Why can't we use this? Not realizing that it takes 75% with five years guaranteed with forgivable loan and everything included. So going through that process with the public has been a lot of my outreach right now in Roland. Also Dollar General is still on the table and having communications with their executives, trying to find the right place fit for the community in the discussion itself and with Comprehensive Plan and then also housing. So housing is also another thing there. And I think we are all aware of the issues in Roland right now with their city hall slash community center from the derecho, the first derecho I have to say now. So in that aspect of it, there is a lot of helping on doing with the city of Roland on helping navigate some funding with the Urban Renewal Plan and their TIF. So that is another thing. Anything in the middle of this topic, please, and ask any questions.
Just add the childcare for Roland. So I've been helping a lot with that, but Greg's been, just because he does have the communication with Roland. So we've both been kind of working on that. So there's a lot of childcare discussion in Roland as well. So.
Yeah, I think it happened right after my, our last presentation in April that the supervisor Fessell was up there with me. We did that community outreach and pulling everyone together. It was a great meeting. I mean, and it was a lot of, they have four local providers, three of them have notified the public that they're going to retire in the next two years. After that happens, there is no childcare available in Roland right now on the horizon. So been working with the city and the local committee as you are as well. And then also too, since that's childcare workforce, Nikki has been the point person on those programs. So she has taken over point on that while I focus on the, the more, I want to say meat potatoes, brick and mortar economic development needs in Roland. So Nikki is now working on that and she's doing a great job. And childcare is one of the things right now that's considered economic development. So that is huge right now for Roland to have that kind of attention.
Well, and your ECI experience is going to be invaluable in all those conversations.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Gilbert Infrastructure Targets, Placemaking, they're using, they're targeting ARPA and their ARPA dollars and also Destination Iowa and a couple of discussions and some community projects. Also MIPA, Mid Iowa Planning Alliance, I'm helping them and I'm up on the calendar for their council agenda in August to talk about MIPA and joining that. So I'm walking them their mayor at city council through the process along with their city staff too. So, Zering, what isn't happening right now, Housing Infrastructure, TIF, ARPA, facade grant completed. On the next slide, after this one, there is some pictures of the facade grant that we worked on with supervisors for downtown Zering. It was one of the first things I did when I got here. The first one, our pictures I took, you know, the snow on the ground, that is not a recent picture, obviously. You'll see the front, the back sides, that is what the building looked like when the facade grant was first approved by the supervisors earlier this year. Next slide, please. That is what it looks like today. That was a local match, local building owner taking over, a local person doing this, and that is now a functioning survivable building with decades of more life ahead of it right now. Cause then on top of the exterior, there was also interior work done as well just to, I want to say, bring it back up to needs. So that project right there is now completed in Zering and that is what is on their downtown mainly coming right into the heart of Zering, which is huge for the community.
I think it's such a nice job. We were driving around the county last weekend and drove by it and I was just so impressed.
Yeah, and it's getting a lot of compliments and a lot of looks and it's kind of helped get some more momentum for the building across the street from city hall. That was collapsed, that was passed on by our predecessor working with Zering. So that is the next target for the community on the downtown area is that collapsed building. Colo Housing Development is proceeding along with MIPA. MIPA is, Colo's also joining MIPA, I helped them through the process. Working with their city staff, they are getting closer to the housing development project that's been in the works for the past couple of years. So there are property discussions, housing, the housing slowdown and the rise in interest rates have kind of changed the dynamics. Everyone was assuming it was going to last forever. So now there's not really, I want to say the pressure is off them. The housing need is still there, but now they have some breathing space to work through the land negotiations. So that's helping them out. Collins, good news on Collins, a catalyst grant that I worked on with Collins got awarded from the state IDA for a hundred thousand dollars. So downtown building expansion renovation for Upper Story Housing in downtown and first floor business, hundred thousand dollar business grant, which is huge for Jiminy Crickets and a landscaping company. I do not eat candy covered crickets, but.
They're delicious.
Nikki assures me they are delicious.
This is chicken night.
Yeah, I mean, you, everybody needs a sticker that says I ate a cricket today.
I will take chicken. I don't think the things that eat the crickets, but I'm not going to eat the crickets. Heart of Iowa Trail Grant, the supervisors approved ARPA dollars for that. We also signed on, sent a letter of support with that and worked with the Strike County Conservation on that project along with city Collins. A county facade grant like we did in Zering, that will be coming here in the next couple of weeks to the supervisors. This is in part with the catalyst grant that I just mentioned first, it's part of the local match dollars that are going to be used for that. So that improvement on that building downtown Collins is hundreds of thousands of dollars, which is huge for their main street projects area. And 3D Printing House. So I am in contact with Iowa State, working with the mayor Collins. And Iowa State has a pilot program for 3D house printing that was awarded from the state of Iowa. Right now they're in Hardin County and I'm talking in discussions with Iowa State to begin on the radar for more local projects in 23 and 24. So that is something that we're targeting for Collins, for that as well, hopefully partnering with Iowa State on that. Cause Collins and other smaller communities have lots, what they don't have is anyone interested in using them. So maybe we can be something more in their backyard versus across the state lines. So that's a positive. Cambridge, you'll see ongoing Opera House Project has had some snags, but they're moving forward. Gas station is possibly new ownership, so I've been working through some issues with that. New city staff introductions. As you are aware, we have a retirement in Cambridge. So I was down there talking to her replacement and hearing nothing but great things about what we are doing as accounting for economic development. So I hit her on a good day, which was a good thing. So. And Slater, Gross Wind Technology Tours of Policy Meetings to Highlight International Work. Some of you have already been down there. One of you I took down there myself in a tour. We are having a meeting too later this month with another group of elected officials as well. Gross Wind Technologies is doing huge things with algae. They are doing something that's going international and we are trying to get the word out. I'm going to be approaching you as supervisors and elected officials to bring more attention to it than what is locally available for our smaller communities. Instead of going to aerators and more mechanical heavy cost driven machinery. This is something they can do for approximately the same cost, but the maintenance costs and operating costs are far lower, which helps them long term. So this is something that might be an option for, for the green tech and energy that they're going to be needed in the future. So.
Quite impressive.
Yeah.
Yeah. Honestly, I walked in the first time and I looked at it and it's like, this is it? Because all you see is this and then when they go through the, the biology and the specs and everything else, I'm like, yeah, this is impressive. So getting that word out and what's happening right here in Story County, that, that's been a priority in Slater too. So.
I know that some of our communities are looking over to do wastewater treatment. Are there some that haven't started yet that still need the newest technology or?
It's exactly what we're going to be doing. Um, I'm working with GWT to work on some local tours with city officials and also you as supervisors to inviting you on that and touring the facility and seeing the potential, what they have right here instead of going what we call traditional aerators and pools and lagoons and everything else.
I'm just wondering about the timing in terms of the projects already underway.
Yeah, that's what we talked about a couple of weeks ago is that those conversations are happening, those projects are being planned and started. So getting in there, having those conversations now before it gets too far.
Yes, the Biden administration's infrastructure bill guidelines, the very, 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 very first one has just been released in July. They are looking at November, December target date for the first round, I want to call it, of funding requirements. There are 16 different categories for electric car charging ports. So this is a massive amount of funding that's going to be hitting us at the local level. Getting on the radar for these local communities so they can find out, hey, listen, this is an option. And, and they can work with GWT here in Story County versus outsourcing it to, you know, Chicago or San Diego or another company that can do the engineering. GWT is doing pilot projects from Sioux City to Chicago across the country and, and they're even piling some programs, I think down in Texas. So this is something that is highly viable and it's something that this funding is designed specifically for coming from the federal government.
Right, but we ran out of ARPA dollars already.
Yes.
For that, so.
I think there was some of those this summer.
Yeah, yes, the ARPA dollars, yes, I'm talking about the infrastructure dollars coming out of DC. Highways, infrastructure, water, sewer, charging ports, electric cars, things like that. This type of technology for these communities is going to be huge because the White House has also released a world playbook, which is designed to help communities like Slater and Collins and Zering to navigate the infrastructure dollars to tap it for these separate projects. So if they can use a local resource and help their wastewater needs right here, but those discussions need to happen now. Versus when the, when the money hits and then they're behind the eight ball because no one wants another ARPA situation. Okay, so this is the slide that I put in front of you and I apologize for that again. These are the things that are on our radar moving forward. Coordination with the new regional director SBDC, I've met her, she's a very nice lady. We're already working on two different projects, one up in Colo, I'm sorry, one up in Roland and another one in another county, but I'm helping with that one as well. Story County Housing Renew Focus, that's been on the back burner because of the legislature. They finally got done doing what they're going to do and now it's July 1 past and now we're focusing on Story County Housing and the planning and, and I'm working with Leanne to get that back on, on my radar as well. Delayed Housing Summit, again, legislature, but that is something that we're hopefully planning for the fall of this year. Real broadband, working with supervisor Merkin, we're having future discussions on that and filling the gaps, ARPA assistance, nuisance enforcement. I have been notified, Bill Menner from Iowa, they're coming back to Ames in 23. And Bill would like to have something specific to Story County focus. So that is something that we're talking about as well for economic development. What hit his radar was the fact being that our position that you have me here in Story County, working with Ames Chamber, has been copied in Johnson County. And he thinks that's just absolutely phenomenal that the two counties like Story County and Johnson County with no offense, but cyclones and hawk eyes. Using the exact same position to help economic development, rural areas can be a really good thing to highlight for communities and counties looking for similar options as well. Gross Wind Technologies, like I said, infrastructure, real playbook. DC Fly-In was earlier in April, I'm sorry, earlier in June. That was very great to have face-to-face discussions with staff and our legislators in DC. There was some good conversations and some things from supervisor Fessell was there and we talked everything from mental health with YSS and Andrew to technology to rural water. So it was a lot of topics, a lot of great discussion. Making another community swing through later this summer, my plan is to hit every city council meeting, talking to the local elected officials and seeing what's changed since I was last around in January, February. Community ED, placemaking, arts and cultures on my radar and the county calendar. Trying to get photos of our beautiful county to get out there so people can see what's going around in Story County. Any questions?
So that's a lot, thank you.
Yep, that's, that's, that is a lot and I am now passing it off to Nikki for her huge amount of work here too.
Yeah, so we're just going to keep giving you information. So we'll start with retraining. Um, so for just this quarter, would you have one student who is using the childcare, there are four students who are using scholarship. Those are mainly ISU students and because of their degree at Iowa State, they have to have their CNA. So they'll take the CNA class and then they'll be here for the next three years at least while they finish up at Iowa State. They'll be working as CNAs plus it'll help them with their four-year degree and then hopefully get them to just stay here with whatever else they move forward with. So, um, that was probably three of the four scholarships. So the completion, so we've got 16 students out of a goal, myself, I had 32. So kind of down this quarter, it's kind of hard to get, you know, those summer classes going because people just kind of, you know, it's nice weather and they really don't want to go to school and, you know, things like that. So as like May kind of comes around, it's definitely. But we got some CNAs, some welders, and then we did start industrial electrical maintenance. That is a really long course, so that won't actually be complete till October. But they did get started this summer. So, and that's going very well. So as you can see, then the stipend funding, we had students who had received their first and second stipend for completing their course. And then we did actually have ones that came back after their 30 days on a job and received that funding as well. So we are having them reach back out to us, you know, having the managers, you know, prove that, you know, there is completion of those third days and they're doing really great. I actually was on a tour at Story Medical when I did teaching for the workforce and I saw one of our CNAs, you know, that had gone through the class Ben and I was like, oh. I was like, when did you start? And he was like, just last week. I was like, okay, don't forget to get ahold of me. So, um, so yeah, it's, it's nice to see, you know, our students out in the community now. And they're, you know, they're benefiting from it. And then these are just some pictures. So the top is just a CNA class, the middle is your welding class. And then the bottom is the advanced PLC. And this was a gentleman from Danfoss. So it's nice to have our employers use some of those certificate courses as well.
PLC.
I always forget, it's something logical controller, but it's, when you're in manufacturing, it's the controller that actually controls the machines to do what they need to do. So I always, from what they told me, it's like playing PlayStation. They have like a little controller and they can actually move the machine around, but it's a lot more fancy than playing PlayStation. So I don't want to downplay what they do. It's just the only way I can correlate it in my brain. So.
Do you have a statistical report with these statistics since the inception of program?
Do what?
Do you have a statistical report with these?
Yeah, I sent that yesterday and it's the spreadsheet and it has the first and the second quarter. So I'll keep all of those in one spreadsheet. So you'll have a whole year. But I usually, when I send it to you, usually the most recent quarter is the one that's saved and open. So, yes, and then at the end of the year, I'll actually do, there's a tab at the end that gives, and so I'll actually finish all of that out and give all the numbers and things like that. So, yes. Um, so job placement in our students, we had 14 of the 23 this quarter that have received jobs. So that's 61%. Placement, that's from doing our meet and greets, the employers, Story County have really enjoyed that. And honestly, the students have as well because they've, you know, I have my mindset on this and then, you know, they meet five or six different employers and they're like, oh my gosh, I have so much to think about. When it comes to, you know, where I want to work and all the benefits and things like that. So right at the end of the quarter, we did have five students, I do see them, you know, also placing a job and everything. You know, that would bring us up to, I think it was like 82%. So really good numbers on them actually getting jobs and holding them. So, and then just the average age for this quarter was 29 years old. So that's good. I mean, that's a really long working, you know, citizen in Story County. And then we did also have three different zip codes, you know, within Story County. So we're, you know, not just reaching Justin Ames, we're also reaching throughout Story County. So that's always good to see. Yeah. All right. And then on to workforce, which definitely goes hand in hand with this. So March of 2022, the unemployment rate is actually, I mean, it is definitely getting low, it's down to the 1.6%. If you look at the surrounding communities, we are the lowest, which is great to see. You know, people are definitely getting back to work, the jobs are out there. So that's great to see. We're still holding career fairs. So I went to the Iowa Wild Career Fair, which was down in Des Moines, which is always nice to kind of reach out. Cause there are a lot of people that commute either from Des Moines up to Ames or, you know, Ames to Des Moines, that kind of thing. So being there was very nice. And then we also had one at the DMAC Career Fair and that was at the Ankeny FFA Enrichment Center. And that one was really, it was all day long. I was not expecting that, but it was all day long and they had, they had students come. So like the schools actually bust in all of the students. And there was different schools at different times. After that, they had college students who were on the DMAC campus come through. And then after that, they actually had, I can't remember his name, sang the national anthem and they did. Was that the, the like parade of flags where they actually present the colors and like they had like a whole ceremony and then they had the veterans show up. It was a great day. And then after that, it was just kind of general public. So it was definitely a full day. But it was nice to see so many different, I mean, you've got to speak to, you know, high schoolers and then you've got to speak to college, you know, and then seeing our veterans and talking to them. And then just your general public after that. It was great. And the whole building was full. So I mean, there was, and there was some Story County people down there as well. So I saw some familiar faces. But then there was also obviously some Pope County as well. So that was a lot of fun. Next slide. So this is just our Facebook, Twitter and just our website. So we are continuing to try and post information, job postings, events that we have. The career fairs, you know, all of those things out on different social media platforms. So those are getting really good numbers. We're seeing a lot of really good numbers. A lot of people are sharing a lot of our workforce information. So that's always nice. You know, because it usually will then go to other counties and things like that. So it is definitely getting out there. Um, and then also our student engagement piece that I do. So I helped with the teen maze, which is always great to see. I was there for, I was there for the Boone Schools, Nevada Schools and one other. And but it was just, it was great too. I was in the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Room. So it was just really great to see these students and, you know, just all the, the way they think and the things that they say. So it was, it was great. And because they had missed the last year, there was actually some really great groups because the schools were kind of bringing two years worth. But a great event, I'm, I'm sure you guys have probably seen, you know, been a part of it over the years, but that was a lot of fun. Also as the school year wound down, Ames FFA presentation, they had made it onto state. And so I kind of helped prep them and sit through, you know, help them with their presentation on what, what do you actually present when you're talking economic development? They, they did great. Then I was also down at the Build My Future. So the one picture is actually Governor Reynolds, she was standing there and there was all the students doing that and she happened to just be standing next to me and I was like, well, you're going to do it, right? So then she did it and had to take pictures. Um, and then the Iowa Work Base Learning Conference was at Pray Meadows. There's a lot of information, a lot of people, always good to just kind of stay in what is happening in the schools, things like that. And then the Teaching for the Workforce was a great event, usually a week long. We crammed it into two days. It was a lot of moving for two days, but we got to do a lot of different tours. We went to Burke. The picture there is at Todd and Sergeant. We even went to the job site for Todd and Sergeant and we got to actually go into the, oh, what are they called? The, the buildings are right off of 30 that they're building for on the, for the green elevators. There we go. Sorry, couldn't find the word. But the ones that are right off 30 that, you know, that they're working on, we are, go to that job site, see it. It was really neat. So two full days of teachers and we actually had two or three teachers that were out of, that were not Boone and Story. They were a completely different county that came over. So they got to see all the really neat things that we're doing here. So that was a lot of fun. And then just our workforce events. You know, Greg had already said, you know, we've got our, you know, Day on the Capitol that had happened. So NEDC Workforce Committee. Brenda is, you know, the head of the NEDC and everything, but I'm helping with their workforce and we're putting together a committee so that they can really dive in and look at, you know, what they need to do. You know, how they can help their community and things like that. So we've had a few meetings and we're getting really close to kind of making some really good action plans. They've set some goals, but we just kind of need more information to help back up what their next actions need to be. We had our Home Base Iowa Breakfast, which was great, you know, learned some things on, you know, what we can do better. But I think it's something that all of the employers really need to know that this is a program that is in Story County and all the different ways that it can be used. And then Leadership Ames and Nevada. And then leadership Ames and Nevada constantly going. So I'm in the leadership Nevada, you know, hopefully graduating here at the end of the getting some projects going. And then just that childcare coalition and grant discussion. There's a lot of funds in regards to childcare. They're also very quick and there's a lot of different rules and things like that. So just working with employers and also the childcare. We had a meeting at Green Hills. We had some nonprofit and employers come and just talk about, you know, how can we partner? Even if we're not able to use these grants, how do we partner? How do we, you know, improve the childcare? So a lot of different discussions in regards to that as well. All right. And I think that's it. Yes, yes, Greg and I are not bored. Yes, but any questions for us? Any comments or? So I will start really marketing that here soon. Fall, we have a journeys class, which is their first class that they have to take. Is scheduled for August fifteenth, sixteen, seventeen to eighteen. So we'll kind of get them into that class first and then we'll start classes. You know, depending on students, we're really trying to do, there's always CNA. So a CNA class will start. It'll probably start in September. But we're looking to get another welding one. I've had a lot of employers say that they're still needing a lot of welding. So we'll have another welding one and then also the healthcare patient services, which is kind of a hybrid. So those are kind of the three that we're looking at. If there's any other interest or anything, we'll definitely look to do more. But those are the three that we're really going to market.
Just wondering how this could also work with childcare, but the retraining program, like if it's possible to. I don't know. I don't know. I like there's the, the incentives, the, the stipends and incentives that are available through the retraining program. You know, I know part of what keeps people from even opening an adult daycare is that the idea of how much it's going to cost and how much extra paperwork they're going to have to do, what they're going to you know, all, all of that, do I register, do I not register? Yeah.
They just sent me a flyer and they've got some classes on opening up your you know, own childcare. And then they also had another flyer of just, you know, here's how you find who has childcare available, you know, because they've got a lot going on there too. And I had the same thing. I'm like, I wonder how we partner with that, but I just got that flyer the other day. So that's definitely something that I can look into a lot more.
I talked to Roland the other, the other day, just about maybe another community meeting where maybe CCR and R can come in and just say, you know, here's, here's how you do it and here's how we can help you and.
Yes. Well, Laura was at the the meeting that we had at Green Hills. And so she did come just because, I mean, she's got so much more you know, knowledge. I mean, she's been doing it a very long time. Yeah. So I know that beginning of August, we're going to the meeting in Roland. And we're going to kind of just really keep the conversation going in regards to childcare. I've been up to Roland once, but just so that they, you know, see my face, you know, more, so that they know to reach out. But yeah, getting CCR and R, I mean, they're just such a great resource and they're statewide too. So I mean, we have our region, but yeah, they are really good resources.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Yes.
Next, we have consideration of minutes. Consideration of personnel actions. Next, we have consideration of planes. And it's tight, we're good. We have no public hearing items, additional items, the departmental reports, other reports, are there any upcoming agenda items? Anything at this time? Moving on to public comment number two, this comment period is for the public to comment on items not on this agenda before it may not take any action on comments due to requirements of open meetings, something may do so in the future. Anyone who should make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step over to the deal. No one will close public comment number two and move on to these assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors.
Headwaters, JMA's meeting in Roland tomorrow and getting near the completion of the reports, the watershed assessments, getting into action steps and what we can really do and targeting where to do that in the watershed. Or to that. I think tomorrow. There's a retirement reception from Jerry Bugg, YSS, which I plan on attending. Thursday morning, I seem to have conflicts, I have two meetings, Story County Economic Development and Cert, I'm hoping we can be able to go to the Economic Development meeting, but it depends on what the other agenda is. And Friday, our platform working group is going to meet and get some things that will be forwarded to supervisors eventually. And I'm going to be out next Monday. That's pretty much what I've got.
So I'm going to attend the YSS unveiling this evening. It's from, I think, four to six and they're going to do just a small little presentation at five o'clock. Carol in the office, I too had Jerry Budger retirement on my calendar. Thursday, I plan to go down to the Story County Economic Development conference. I'll be here Friday and Monday I'm going to promote my baby. Furnace and AC installed and a natural hopefully it's and I will be, but I'll be available. Yeah, you know, they have to go down weekends and I'm going to do a complete installation. So which day would be easier? So for me, I have Story County Housing Trust meeting this afternoon. I'm going to try and make it to the YSS unveiling. Still trying to get ready for a conference, so. See what I forgot to finish up on here. And then this evening I have a Circa meeting. And then tomorrow I leave for Colorado for the National Association of Counties Conference. And I will be back Tuesday evening. I will try and zoom in to our meeting on next Tuesday, but I will be probably in the airport. I'll be back in the office Wednesday while I have NEDC Wednesday morning. So then I'll be in the office.